Welcome to tonight's regular city council meeting for today, Monday, March twenty five, two thousand twenty four. I understand we've got a number of people in the audience who speak Spanish better than English, and so allow me to take a moment. Um, pues buenas noches, bienvenidos a todos a la reunión de la del concilio de la ciudad de Sunnyside, Paraguay, el veinticinco de marzo de este año dos mil veinticuatro. Uh, no voy a poder interpretar toda la reunión porque es muy difícil conducir una reunión en inglés y en español o otro idioma. Uh, dos idiomas a la vez es muy difícil, así que si tienen alguien al lado para traducir para usted sería para mí una bendición realmente. Okay, I was just saying we don't have anybody in line to interpret at this point, and so if they have somebody next to them that can help them understand, that would be helpful. I have attempted to do meetings in two languages at the same time before, and I find that really difficult, especially since I haven't been practicing my Spanish a great deal lately for some reason. All right, first item of business invocation, do we have somebody here to do an invocation this evening? Hay alguien aquí para hacer la invocación? Okay, I would ask that you please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance afterwards. Pastor.
Ah, vamos a orar.
Okay, uh, notification pastor is going to pray in Spanish, okay, but.
Lo voy a hacer en español. Los que pagan andarse con la derecha pueden andarlo para arriba. Padre que estás en los cielos, que tú eres rey de reyes, señor de señores. A ti venimos hoy señor, que traigas sabiduría, que traigas inteligencia a nuestros corazones, a nuestro espíritu, nuestra alma, nuestro corazón, para que nuestra ciudad sea mejor y excelente, establecer tus principios y valores en nuestra comunidad. Amamos Sunnyside y pedimos hoy que en esta junta te manifiestes con tu sabiduría como lo has hecho desde el principio y lo seguirás siendo por el fin de los fines en el nombre de Jesús. Bendigo a cada uno de los tan presentes y sea tu sabiduría, que traiga iluminación, que traiga entendimiento, gracia para hacer las cosas como tú lo has dicho, con justicia, con gracia, con favor y con misericordia. Así bendecimos a Sunnyside y a las autoridades que rigen esta comunidad en el nombre de Jesucristo. Padre, te damos gracias por tus favores y misericordias que tienes para con cada uno de nosotros en el nombre de Jesús. Así tus rayos de sabiduría vengan a nuestra mente y establezcamos tu reino en este lugar. En el nombre de Jesús te damos las gracias, amén, amén.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the reading of our holy bands, one nation under God indivisible, with evergreen. Thank you, you may be seated. All right, and I have for me, yes. All right, so public comments, I'm just a reminder, citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes. Council may refer items to staff to review and or research for presentation at a future meeting. And first name on my list is Sis Canard. This is Canard.
Thank you, Sis Canard Edison Avenue, Sunnyside. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask for the council's yes vote on item H on tonight's agenda, the Sunnyside Museums Agreement. Um, a yes vote would help the association move forward on a building, a single storage building uh, for all the treasures at the museum. The board's been working diligently trying to organize things, including um matching up many, many pictures up with family files, and we've uncovered some great treasures, including handwritten weather ledgers. But if you are over thirty five, we can tell you what the weather was in Sunnyside on the day you were born. Um, and along with that, we have a typewriter that types in Braille. Now, I haven't quite figured out how that's associated with Sunnyside, but I will work on that. And um, these are treasures that have been buried in the piles of things that are not really properly stored, and that's why this building is so important. I also assure you that um, if the association had a storage building, um, we will probably uncover more interesting treasures. And also, when the city gets around to it, if we have a building to put our treasures in, then the city will have an easier way to repair the building that we're in. Um, because they won't have to be tripping over all those things. Um, and I also am pretty assured that it will look a little nicer around the museum if we have a nice big steel building instead of four little sheds and stuff all over the place. So I'm just asking you seriously to consider how important it is and um, uh, what I really need is just the council's yes vote, and then the association is going to work with the funding of it. So it is an absolute win-win-win situation. So thank you very much for your time. I want to thank Trevor and Raul and Sydney for helping me get this project this far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Monty Johnson.
All right, hello, Monty Johnson, I am a history teacher. I've taught at Sunnyside School District for about thirty seven years now. I'm also a member of the historical board in the museum for almost thirty years. And obviously, I'm here to support the museum. Um, again, I think history is vital, and I'll admit upfront, I'm biased, I'm very biased, but history is important for a number of reasons. You know, first of all, hey, it it is a measuring stick, it's a gauge. It's where, you know, how we can tell where we've come from, how far we've come, and give us some kind of a sense of direction of where we're going. Having a proper museum in this community can help do that for Sunnyside. It also teaches valuable lessons. And I will quote a historian, George Centania, who once famously said that those who do not remember the lessons of the past are doomed to repeat them. Having a proper museum can help teach this community about some of those lessons. Maybe most importantly, though, history is what defines us and it's what binds us together as a nation, as a people, it's what defines us as Americans at the national level, but I think it does the same for us at the community level. We are a member of a community, Sunnyside, and we have a past. We need a place to display and preserve that past and to help teach the community about it. The museum can do that. And I would like to, you know, compliment Sis Canard, she has worked very hard to keep the the historical board in the museum alive. She deserves a lot of credit for that. And from having worked with her on a historical board, I think she has a common vision with me and that this museum could be a place that honors all members of our community, all groups, both past and present. We all have a story to tell, and that is part of our history. And by telling it, it helps, I think, to bring this community together. We live in a time when there are a lot of things pulling us apart. We need more things to bring us together, and a museum, I think, would help do that for this community. So I'll finish by saying that, not to toot my own horn or to brag, I have two master's degrees, and one of them is basically in local history. And I can tell you that this community has a rich, vibrant history that it can be very proud of. But it's a history that's not known that much, and I think a museum, a proper museum, could help tell that story and help bring our community together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Tony Soto.
My name is Tony Soto, and I've lived in this town since nineteen fifty nine. And there has never been no Hispanic role models in our town. And if you people are trying to vote on that proclamation that you want to vote on, I say it's about time. We Hispanics have fed you guys, have put food on your table, have worked hard for you, and we're here to stay. So you might as well find a role model for us, and I believe you have. I remember my good friend Betty Carlisle, I belong with her with to the Novella Club, and she would always ask me, Tony, who is your role model? We want to get a statue for him in Sunnyside because you guys also belong to Sunnyside. So we have a proclamation coming up, and I hope you guys say yes to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Soto. Uh, Maria Fernandez.
Maria Fernandez with E A, Empowering Latina Leadership in Action. Um, I was really surprised that this proclamation um has turned into something quite controversial here, uh, primarily because the mayor was refusing to sign a proclamation in recognition of Cesar Chavez Day. Um, that's highly disappointing given the area that we live in. I remember being a young Y V C student in nineteen ninety five, maybe even ninety four, when we were organizing here in Sunnyside. Um, I can't even call myself an organizer, but working or more like um, tagging along and admiring the work of Rosalinda Guillen, who was organizing with United Farm Workers Union here in Sunnyside just down the street. Um, many, many different initiatives, but again, United Farm Workers being founded and confounded by Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta. There's a long history of United Farm Workers here that cannot be ignored, um, and essentially not um, going the traditional route of recognizing Cesar Chavez through a proclamation is um tantamount to ignoring the incredible contributions of the United Farm Workers and his work and Dolores, Dolores Huerta's work, Rosalinda Guillen's work here locally. Um, it is, it's, it's quite astonishing that that this would have to come to this. Um, I, I worked in the agricultural industry for six years. Well, this is just most recently. Let's not even talk about the many years that we were farmworkers ourselves, traveling all through Washington, um, picking berries or grapes or apples or cherries. Um, but most recently with the Washington State Fruit Commission, where I helped to launch Good for Growing Español because the commission was failing to recognize the importance of Latino labor within the industry and the growing Latino grower population within the industry. And when they wanted to relegate this to a side project, I had to remind them that without Latino labor, farmworkers, warehouse workers, ag workers, Washington State's economy would collapse, there would be no ag industry, not the way that we know it. So the very least, the leadership here needs to recognize the contribution that farmworkers make to this entire state, more specifically because they are such a prominent population here in Sunnyside, especially here in Sunnyside. And the very least we can do is to recognize their efforts, the work of Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta, specifically for this proclamation, the work of Cesar Chavez in in organizing and founding um the United Farm Workers. That should just have been really a non-issue.
Thank you. Let's make sure I get this one right, uh, her Mila Sanchez. Did I say that correctly? Lo dije correcto?
Sí.
Mila Sanchez?
Sí.
Okay.
Gracias, pero no hablo inglés y usted no habla español, así que.
Y no habla español.
Ah, ustedes no, no me entienden. Okay, mi tema es, bueno, soy de la unión de los campesinos.
Vamos a dejarle oportunidad a alguien interpretar. Si, si usted puede dar pausa, vamos a dejarle a la, a la, a la joven ahí. Are you able to do that?
Sí, por favor.
I can, I can, um, I can also call Language Line, I was just on the phone. If you want me to connect with them, I can, it'll be a minute.
Okay.
Or I can try my best.
Un minuto vamos a conectar por teléfono con un intérprete que puede interpretar para que todo se entienda.
Gracias. Okay, I'm gonna call them again. Nine zero two.
Now, patience, we're learning the system, and so it's going to take a minute or two to get this all, okay. Estamos aprendiendo el sistema, va a costar un poquito de tiempo. I think, I think so, yeah. Got two more names on the list, Teodora, you speak English, right? We were classmates in school, so.
I will do my best to.
Okay, puede acercar otra vez a la, la joven va a interpretar, entonces dale, dale pausa para poder interpretar, okay?
Gracias. Bueno, yo apoyo.
He supports.
Um. El proyecto de Cesar Chavez, y no veo la razón por la cual no se le pueda reconocer igual que Martin Luther King.
And she doesn't see the reason it can't be recognized like Martin Luther King.
Él fue una persona que igual, igual que él se merece el mismo respeto y el mismo.
Person like him that deserves respect.
Otra cosa importante, no sé, no sé qué está pasando con nosotros.
I don't know what's happening with us.
Está subiendo bastante el agua aquí en Sunnyside. Yo vivo aquí en Sunnyside, y si las cosas siguen como van, pues ya no nos vamos a poder ni bañar porque el bill de la agua ya está exageradamente caro, y nosotros que somos de bajo ingreso, no sé qué, qué está pasando.
If things go the way they're going, they won't be able to shower because things are getting so really expensive with the water rates.
Y es triste que somos la mayoría hispanos en este lugar y no tengan uh, servicio español aquí, como si nosotros no contáramos. Es todo, gracias.
She says it's sad that the majority is Hispanic here and there isn't Spanish interpreting services.
Yeah, thank you. And the next name on my list, uh, Teodora.
Hello, my name is Teodora Martinez, and I live in the Outlook area. And uh, first off, I want to say, um, I'm glad that Karen Vázquez had made a comment uh last staff, last staff meeting, last city council meeting uh regarding Julia's heart and not uh participating in certain things. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out was, I know after that meeting, um, I, I, you know, I kind of overheard Karen and the mayor having a discussion about her comments, and I just felt like uh, from what I could hear, like, this is just my personal opinion, but I felt like she was being reprimanded by the mayor just because she was making a comment in regards to Julia Hart's behavior, um, you know, not participating in certain things. So I just want to point that out. I'm glad, Karen, that you spoke out, and also you are a role model, don't forget that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I was asking that council members not call each other out by name. Um, we don't allow people who make public comments to call each other out by name, and we don't allow council member, we can say I was, she could say I was disappointed in a council member who didn't show up. But um, calling out people by name is generally not accepted in a, in a public meeting like that. And so I was advising her, not necessarily trying to reprimand her, but I was trying to advise her. And I may have sounded a little bit more strident than I intended, but that's because I was rushing to get out the door before she got away, so. If it sounded harsh, I apologize for that. All right, last name on my list is Jim Stevens.
Uh, Jim Stevens, uh, through twenty eight Grandview Avenue. Uh, I think the uh, uh, subject of trying to get interpretation in our meetings is a good idea. Uh, this is being done all across the country in many venues, and they have electronics to be able to do this, and it seems to me that that would be a very good uh investment of our council to do this, uh, these others are, uh, it's really difficult for uh, folks to get up here and have to go through that. So I'd, I'd encourage you to uh look into that. Uh, my main point of being here tonight was, or to speak tonight, was uh regarding noise in the community. And we have ordinances about noise, and yet they're not enforced. Uh, the issue about it is erosi, and there's, there's a lot of information out there that uh, shows you what happens and what uh noise is, the audible pollution. Uh, we, in our office, we work in the arena of sleep and study it intensely. And it's a, it is, it is the epidemic in our nation today, and it causes heart attacks. Uh, police, for instance, have a thirty to seventy percent more uh chance of having a heart attack in a stressful event than the, the majority of the community, and you look at their sleep issue, and these folks have horrible uh hours, et cetera, plus a lot of stress, uh, it's a really tough job. So this is getting back to the issue of sleep and how dangerous this is. A lot of people die in their sleep due to sleep apnea. And they have, uh, there's all sorts of problems with sleep, uh, that can be fragmented. Uh, noise outside, you may not wake you up, but it's disturbing your sleep, it's eroding these people's health. My office is down on Ninth Street, and the noise down there is, compared to where we live, is horrible. Uh, there's noise going on all the time, there's dogs barking, uh, loud cars going, uh, when I'm down there on the weekend on a Sunday or Saturday, loud cars going by, it's, it's, uh, the folks that live there uh really deserve to have a better quality of life than that. And if we don't enforce these ordinances, they're simply not going to have it. So their sleep's disturbed, they can't go home on a weekend and have a nice quiet uh time in their uh house or their home or a good night's sleep. And I really strongly suggest that we start to enforce some of these ordinances, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I have a note on the Zoom here that Chelsea Demas would like to speak, Ms. Demas.
Uh, sorry, I came, I was finishing up a call outside, so I just jumped on the Zoom, but thank you for making the time. Uh, my name is Chelsea Demas, I live in Sunnyside. Um, I'm also proudly running for state representative in the new district fourteen. Um, a little bit about this, the new district is that many of you may already know this, but it is full of agriculture, it's rich in agriculture. Uh, we have a lot of farmworkers here, a lot of campesinos, including some that were formerly, well, some that are former farmworkers that were my parents, and so that's why I feel um, I feel like I have to be here to speak up for the proclamation. Again, mayor, you have had the unique opportunity to sign off on something that really and truly reflects our community, and yet again, you have disappointed us by choosing not to sign this proclamation to recognize a leader of the movement, and that's Cesar Chavez. A lot of folks here struggle with finding representation in their leadership, and I feel like the least you can do is uplift other leaders who have made history doing this work. So I hope that, you know, I asked council that there could be some sort of amendment to the policies of how we sign proclamations, of what the requirements are, and that they're not solely based off of the belief of one person. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, that's the last person who has signed up. Um, I do want to clarify one thing, and I don't know if it'll help, I know there was a time a year ago where I tried to clarify things and it didn't help. Um, I had earlier this year decided that I wasn't going to do proclamations this year, and I decided that for a reason. Proclamations historically have been the mayor's prerogative. Uh, the mayor signs that, the mayor gives out awards, the mayor gives out mayor's coins, and so uh, last year, um, in June, when I didn't make a proclamation for Pride Month, I received insults. I received threats, I received, I was bullied. And I remember in the study session, I heard somebody saying good while I was saying that, no, it is not good. I felt threatened personally, and my family was threatened as well. As a result of that, I said, you know, for a year at least, I'm going to take a hiatus from making proclamations. I will say something in favor of something, and I fully intended to tonight, to uh, to make a statement in favor of Cesar Chavez, in favor of the rich history of farmworkers and seasonal agricultural workers in our valley. Um, there was a council member who was not satisfied with that and has brought forward a resolution, and we will be voting on that this evening in the meeting. But uh, my decision not to make proclamations was mine alone, and was a result of threats against my family. Uh, people made public and private comments that were insulting. And it wasn't a large population in the community, but they were very vocal. And in one particular case, some of the things that were being threatened, I marched to my house. Um, that involves my family, and I do not respond to that well. That is not right, it is not fair under any circumstances. And so I made a decision, it was a unilateral decision that I made myself as the mayor, because that particular authority at that time was mine. And I felt that if somebody doesn't get their way, don't get what they want, and that was their response, then I didn't need to do proclamations for a while, because I was very uncomfortable with that. The last time it happens, I shared with council earlier, was in December at the Festival of Trees, and somebody still unhappy with me for that threatened to do me physical harm at the Festival of Trees. Fortunately, I was out of the building, I was talking to one of the county commissioners at the time, but people at my table informed me that that had happened. And so that is the only reason why I made that decision. I also reiterated to council that if it was important to them, then I would step back from that decision, acquiesce, and make the proclamations that they wanted to read. Um, didn't have a problem with that because it was a personal decision. So to say that I refuse to make proclamations to recommend or to, in favor of somebody who's very important to the community, no, I would definitely have read a statement, but it wasn't going to be an actual proclamation, but there is a proclamation before me tonight. I agreed with council that I would read that, so that proclamation will be read, okay? I will take a different tack in the, in the future. However, I will say that as a result of that sort of thing, if I ever feel my fam, like myself or my family is threatened, then my first recourse will be legal action. It is a felony to threaten an elected official, and I will pursue that if I am threatened. So. It's going to take a while, but I will make an attempt. Hace un año, yo decidí que no iba a ser proclamaciones a causa de lo que pasó después del mes de junio del año pasado, cuando yo no hice una proclamación acerca de, de mes de Pride. Y decidí que me amenazaron, me abusaron, me insultaron, me empujaron en, en varias cosas, fue un grupo pequeño de miembros de la comunidad, pero con la forma que me trataron y las cosas que me dijeron, yo decidí que no iba a ser proclamaciones durante este año, por lo menos, y quizá por los próximos dos años. Uh, últimamente eso ocurrió en diciembre en un evento de la ciudad, acerca de las, fiesta de los arbolitos. Um, y estaba amenazándome, iba a atacarme. Eh, bajo ninguna situación es justo ni correcto. Y por esa razón yo decidí que no iba a ser proclamaciones. Habiendo, habiendo decido eso, esa noche iba a leer un, unas palabras acerca de Cesar Chavez a favor de Cesar Chavez y también reconociendo a los miembros de la comunidad que han pasado su vida trabajando en los campos y como migratorio o viviendo aquí, trabajando en cualquier campo que hicieron, eh. Pero eso fue la razón, no tengo nada en contra de Cesar Chavez ni trabajadores agricultores, okay? Okay, moving on. First item of business, consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Payroll vouchers, approved payroll voucher numbers one, one, nine, four, six, six through one, zero, eight, nine, zero, one, and wire transfers as listed for five hundred thirty eight thousand, nine hundred forty nine dollars and eighty four cents for the period ending March eleven, two thousand twenty four. Through one, zero, eight, nine, zero, one and wire transfers as listed for five hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents for the period ending March eleven, two thousand twenty-four. Claim vouchers. Approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, eight, seven, seven, two through one, zero, eight, eight, four, zero. And wire transfers as listed for three hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and forty-one cents for the period ending on March eight, two thousand twenty-four. Approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, eight, eight, four, one through one, zero, eight, eight, nine, five and wire transfers as listed for three hundred two thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. For the period ending on March fifteen, two thousand twenty-four. And approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, eight, eight, nine, seven through one, zero, eight, nine, zero, one and wire transfers as listed for. Twenty thousand, eight hundred eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents for the period ending on March nineteen, two thousand twenty-four. Council members, is there any item on the consent agenda that you would wish to remove to discuss?
Just had a few question and a couple.
Okay, can you give the numbers?
Twenty-six, eighty-nine, twenty-nine, seventeen.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Uh twenty-six, eighty-nine, it's the HLA Engineering. And if you scroll down, this is ADA Transition Plan twice with different amounts. I was just. Kind of curious on that. That one.
All right, um our financial director is not here. Um. Wants to take that one.
So I can fill in on that. So um. HLA has been working on wrapping up our ADA Transition Plan, so they've been in in Sunnyside quite a bit this last, these last couple of weeks. Um so I believe that these are just kind of the last two large push amounts in order to get this planned completed. So they they've. Allocated a lot of sta- of their staff time to wrapping up this plan. So. Um it is coming to a close and it should be in front of council relatively soon. And that's what I believe is is happening here. This. Showing that they've been, they've been here and they've been charging for their time in Sunnyside to to wrap up this transition plan.
That that amount there, the whole thing is. Ah, but would you say be like half a year worth of uh items or a quarter worth of items? Um I'll call the Public Works Director.
Well, um without actually seeing what those invoices were for, um but that would be. What they've been working on since they started this ADA Transition Plan, which would have been something that started a few actually. A while back. So as far as what all that included as a timeframe, I'm not sure without the finance director.
Okay. And then the other one, the twenty-nine, seventeen. I think uh the city attorney can help me on this one a little bit. Twenty-five thousand dollars. Um that's a monthly for prosecuting services, correct? And it it's the same amount, no matter how many cases we prosecute. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Mayor, does that answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay. Further questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. What is council's desire on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Beeler to approve the consent agenda as presented in a debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye. Motion passes. And there was a note on there as well as per Finance Director Fabi Gil, claim voucher number one, zero, eight, eight, nine, six was voided. And so I think um. Clerk explained that to each of us as she passed out that one form. So. As for the public's knowledge, we did have one claim voucher that was avoided. All right, item three, active agenda. Proclamation process. Consider approving a resolution to approve and sign proclamations. And. Ms. Frausto, you want to take this one?
I should. Uh so uh the proclamation process, uh this is a resolution introduced to my fellow uh colleagues um here in council. To consider approving a resolution to approve and sign proclamations, specifically amending the current process. Um I have a note. I'll go ahead and and read this. Um so following a dialogue with the mayor regarding the potential signing of the Cesar Chavez Day proclamation. He shared his personal hesitations about endorsing this in any future proclamations. While I respect his perspective, we have respectfully agreed to disagree on this matter. Consequently, I am presenting a resolution to the council to revise our current approach to proclamations. Should this resolution pass, it would allow us to honor Cesar Chavez Day for the first time in Sunnyside's history, marking a. Significant moment for our community. This amendment aims not only to democratize the proclamation process, but also to celebrate our collective values. And the contributions of individuals like Cesar Chavez to our society. The act of signing the Cesar Chavez Day proclamation symbolizes our recognition of the invaluable contributions of farm workers. Past, present, and future to our community. At the recent United Farm Workers Rally yesterday, UFW President Teresa Romero highlighted the essential role. Of farm workers in our daily lives by sharing with us the following message she once heard from a community member. While one may need a dentist twice a year. Or a doctor occasionally for health concerns. We rely on farm workers three times a day for our meals. In Sunnyside, farm workers constitute nearly thirty percent of our workforce, underscoring their pivotal role in our economy. It's crucial that we acknowledge and remember the lasting impact of farm workers who remain the backbone. And the beating heart of our community.
Frausto, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I think you're on item B.
I wanted to uh state this uh comment before we go into the moving of the resolution. I think um I wanted to ex- well, I believe. Expressing um the motivation behind this and the objective behind this is important. So no, I was not in the wrong.
Sorry to interrupt.
I was done.
Okay.
So um. I guess. Um this goes now to council. Um you have heard um my comment. Um. I believe my my belief and uh as to why we should amend the current process. Um as I mentioned before during the workshop, I believe this would dem- uh democratize. And really give everyone here sitting an input and a vote in any future proclamation that would come before us. Um so.
All right, counsel. And again, for the audience and rest and uh just for a little background information, again, I as I shared before. Um I stopped doing proclamations as a result of the threats and bullying and. Insults that I received last year. It was a, there were a lot of personal attacks. And so I did not um did not want those to continue and I thought I'd step away from proclamations for a period of time. Um what I did do and and Ms. Frausto is correct that when she called me and and contacted me about the Caesar Chavez proclamation. I said that I would certainly issue a statement in favor of Mr. Chavez and the work that he'd done and recognize that. Uh we all have a great deal to appreciate uh from the work that he's done and and what he has brought. To the agricultural workers uh lives as as far as improved wages and 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 so much more. But I was going to stop short of a proclamation, not because I have any disrespect for Mr. Chavez and what he did, but simply had made a blanket decision last year. To to not continue with proclamations. Um but I did offer to counsel that um, you know, I will uh step back and acquiesce and. Sign all the proclamations that uh council wants to have proclaimed. And it was obviously very important to council members that these proclamations be be issued and so that I was willing to um. Just go ahead and do that and ask that the this resolution be withdrawn. Um. So I. Reiterating that, that I will sign whatever proclamations come before me and make sure that they are read into the record. And um and the reason I I guess the reason I want to do that is because it is a lot of extra work. There's a lot of proclamations that are out there. That we could read and it is more work for council to do. Uh we have to examine those every single meeting or we could do it every single month. But yeah, I would. I prefer to leave the situation the way that it is. There's not, as I've said before, not a lot of perks. In in being the mayor of Sunnyside. It is one more. I'm just one more vote. I don't have any extra powers or anything like that. Um I simply get to chair the meetings and um receive emails the from people who are unhappy with me. So um. One of the the best things that I get to do is give out awards and recognitions and um. Recognize both events and people and that's probably. The the best part of being the mayor and I I would like to preserve that because that's something that's very special to all the mayors. It's certainly not just to myself, but historically, the mayors have always enjoyed that. So that was my comments to council. Council members, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I have one question.
Ms. Vasquez.
So I'm seeing this packet and it's missing an item title. Was that intentionally or by accident?
No. Wasn't intentional.
There is no agenda cover sheet because this item comes from a council member.
Okay. So it being coming from a council member, can we move to vote for this? Cause I know that he's saying that he wants to. Take it out, but can we still proceed with that?
Yes, you can proceed or you can pull the i- pull the item.
Okay.
Right. And in a in in a moment, I will ask what the desire of council is and the council member said, I moved to pull it. I can move to to pass it, whatever, whatever council chooses to do.
Okay, I just wanted more clarification just because I didn't see no item title or no recommendation.
Okay, yeah, recommendations usually come from staff.
Okay. Good question. And the and the recommendation is on the agenda cover sheet. Just. You consider approving a resolution to approve and sign proclamations?
Yes, I see that. Okay.
Question, further questions or comments from council? Mr. Beeler.
Having this approved. You um you're you're talking like you're gonna lose uh. You signing these and doing these and you're not, you still have to sign them.
That's correct. I still have to sign it. It's just a choice that I would get to make. Say, hey, you know, I want to make a special proclamation about this. Something comes up. Now, before I can make a special proclamation, something come up, I would have to run it by council and have that approved. And that's just an extra step. So something special that happened today and I wanted to make a proclamation about that, I would have to come up through council prior. So. Further questions or comments? Ms. Ripley.
I think it might be a good idea to have like an alternate, you know, if uh if you feel you don't wanna. Do it, then um let the deputy mayor do it. You know, you would still have your your mayorship. But you know, if there's something that you just, you know, feel you don't wanna proclaim. Then there's an alternate.
No, I'm fine making proclamations. You know, it was interesting because I asked last year, you know, anybody who wants to understand the reasons or hear the reasons for. Why I didn't do this, please speak to me outside of the meeting, because I'm not gonna explain it during the meeting and nobody did. And so I I found that uh I found that interesting. But no, you're right. I could. Technically pass it off to the deputy mayor. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I just think this is gonna take a target, I guess, off your back. I I don't agree with the threats and then the bullying that you went through last year. Uh that shouldn't happen at all. Uh we should be a community together and and unite. Um you know, you might not agree with with uh what the mayor did. You know, don't don't go and threaten people, you know, it's 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 not right. Let's let's come together, make this community a lot better.
Thank you, sir. Further comments?
I have one more.
Ms. Frausto.
Um and I want to echo Deputy Mayor. Um you know, I I don't condone violence and I said this during the workshop. I know many of you weren't weren't there quite yet. Um I I don't condone, I'm I'm sorry that you experienced that once again, uh Mr. Mayor. Um that shouldn't happen. Uh no threats should come forth in any way, shape or form. Um but I I I I think it's i- important to amend this process. So we all get an input of any future proclamation. Um like I mentioned, when we had our discussion, you were quite hesitant to sign any proclamation. Um I see now that perspectives are shifting uh here apparently dur- during our council session today. Um I hadn't heard that before. Um but. We speak about the work coming to council and more work coming to council and I will reiterate this again. I was voted in. To take the seat and work for you all. So I that is exactly what I'm gonna do. Um if that means putting more proclamations on my desk, which I don't think they will come in 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 masses, but when they do. Um I will gladly look over every sheet, underscore every word and highlight every sentence. I will stay up through the wee hours of the morning to make sure that the work is getting done. You all voted me on i- into council. I am here to do my job. So bring on the work because this is our commitment and our responsibility to the community that we are here to serve.
Further comments or questions? Hearing none. What is the desire council on this item?
I move to consider approving a resolution to approve and sign proclamations.
Nice second.
Debate on this item. Hearing.
Just some time real quick. Um the process will like. Two percent of proclamation in the future would would that come from council or? If a community member has something in mind, do they need to come to council and suggest it and then they'll bring it forward?
I believe there's a line here that says that this would come to the city. Um so we can determine. How that looks like. We can come to the the city manager. Um they can review. They can, you know, bring it to council. Um uh if anybody brings anything to council, of course, we would go back to the city manager. I would believe it's following uh. Proper protocol and and we continue doing that. So.
Thank you, Ms. Frausto. Go ahead.
If it's okay with you, I can always put a page on the website. Where citizens can submit a request for proclamation and it would go to the city manager, myself and the mayor.
Yeah.
More clarification, the better.
So the clerk has a fairly long list of proclamations that have been made or could been could be made over the years. And we will and each month has its its share of proclamations and they will, at the very minimum, those will appear before council in your packet. Before the meetings and we will discuss those during the meeting. Anything else is presented to on the city website. To the manager, the clerk or myself, they will be brought forward at those meetings as well and we will discuss the merits of those and we will have a vote on it. All right, we've got a motion on the floor seconded. All in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. I vote no. Motion carries. All right. Shoot, wrote it on the wrong line. Hang on a second. Apologies for that. I wrote on the wrong line. All right, item B, Cesar Chavez Proclamation. Consider approving a resolution to approve the Cesar Chavez Day Proclamation. Counsel, President Obama, I do not remember in what year, but President Obama established March thirty-one as Cesar Chavez Day.
Fourteen.
Yeah, it was in twenty fourteen. Thank you, Ms. Frausto. And so council has proposed that. We make a proclamation for Cesar Chavez Day since the motion was just passed that we need to take a vote on that. Do we have any debate or discussion on this item? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I just can't believe, I mean, it's been ten years and and it's never been brought up to council. Before is a proclamation for Cesar Chavez with, you know, our community being. Majority Hispanic um and farm workers. Um it should it should have been, this should have been, this should have happened a long time ago.
I don't disagree with you, sir. However, I will say that there are some things that just absolutely pass right by our attention and we don't see some of the stuff that most people would think would be the most obvious. Um we get caught up in other things, um transitions and and all that sort of stuff. Things can get fall through the cracks. I'm certain it was not intentional. Further comments, questions? Ms. Frausto.
Uh yeah, uh you you know, I just I just want to say, I'm I'm actually gonna say say this in in Spanish. Um since I know we have a lot of Spanish speaking members of the community um present here today. Uh muchas gracias por estar aquí. Uh yo sé que no es un momento fácil cuando tenemos que luchar. Por nuestros derechos y ser reconocidos en estos espacios. Uh les agradezco su valentía, el valor y la fuerza que le dedican a esta comunidad y a su trabajo. Mis papás también eran padres emigrantes. Um trabajaban en el campo. Así así, um así hacían el dinero, um así me compraban mi ropa, mi comida. Yo sé el esfuerzo que ustedes hacen cada día en levantarse, a irse sus trabajos. Um las condiciones que a veces no son las más favorables, ni para su salud, uh ni para su salud mental. Uh yo reconozco ese esfuerzo, lo he vivido con mis propios padres, es ha sido mi experiencia. Y les quiero decir que aquí estamos con ustedes, apoyando, luchando. Y ah luchando también por los derechos, siguiendo, siguiendo luchando por los derechos que ustedes se merecen. Cada día porque son parte de esta comunidad y quiero que lo sepan y que se lo graben muy bien. Muchas gracias por estar aquí.
Mr. Beeler.
Say a little bit of that English, just roughly what you said.
Absolutely, absolutely, Mr. Beeler. Thank you so much for asking. Yes, um so I really extended my gratitude. Uh for those in the audience who um are Spanish speaking only, um and who are attending here today. I let them know that I share a similar experience because my parents were also migrant farm workers. They contributed to this. They contributed to this community for many, many years, um, in migrant farm working labor. Uh, I mean, we, we did everything here in Sunnyside, from cherry picking to asparagus cutting. And then we'd move over to the Skatja Valley and do a lot of work over in the Sakuma Farms and then make our way back home. They contributed, um, through their labor, through their sweat, through their fatigue. And I recognize that many of our community members here today have and continue to live the same experience. I let them know that it is important for them to show up and understand that they are valuable contributors to this community, like anyone else, they deserve a place and a space. And, um, and I am here to help them recognize, and not only recognize, keeping, um, keeping that memory and, and remembering that every day, they are as much part of this community as anyone else, anyone here on this bench, the mayor, the city clerk. Um, any one of us, we are all contributors to this community and we need to be recognized as such, and given and provided the human dignity that they also deserve.
Thank you for interpreting that for yourself, Ms. Fausto, that was helpful to the rest of us in the, in the room. Any other comments from council members? Ms. Vasquez.
I, I too wanna share something in Spanish really quick, and then I'll go ahead and translate it as well. So, yo también quiero simplemente extenderles las gracias y más en este día que en otros. Quiero decirle gracias por todo su trabajo, su esfuerzo, por siempre estar ahí proveendo y luchando por sus familias, por ustedes mismos. Cada uno de ustedes son bien importantes, yo también sé la lucha, yo también sé que no es fácil. Pero ahí estamos, para poder poner comida en la mesa, para poder ser un, alguien que nuestros hijos, los hijos y la familia puede vernos y decir, mira, ellos sí me proveen, ellos sí me aman. Y la verdad es que muchos de nosotros hemos venido a este país para encontrar esperanza, para encontrar cosas diferentes, para que sean mejor, mejores nuestras vidas. So, le quiero decir gracias, gracias por seguir esos sueños. Y también quiero recordarles que nunca terminen de batallar por sus sueños, porque todavía es posible. No importando en dónde están en este mismo día, ustedes aún pueden alcanzar todo, cada meta que han ponido, y cada cosa que han adicionado, han soñado, todavía lo pueden alcanzar. So, muchas gracias a todos ustedes, y también quiero decirles gracias porque sin ustedes nosotros no podríamos estar aquí. Y ahora que estamos aquí, queremos representar y queremos decirles gracias por todo su esfuerzo. Y para esto, este momento que va a suceder en un poco de minutos. Gracias. So, I just, I just said that I wanted to say thank you more, more today than in any other day. I wanted to say thank you for all of their work, for everything that they do every single day, for putting food on their tables, for being role models to their children, for always fighting and for always never giving up to provide food, to be there and to show love and to demonstrate to their children that no matter what, no matter what situation they're in, no matter where they work, that they will continuously provide, and I also told them to never give up on their dreams, that they, a lot of us come from another country, and we do come here, and to seek, to seek a better future, to seek better opportunities. And I told them that doesn't matter where they are in this state, that they can still achieve everything that they set their minds to do. And to never give up, because no matter how it looks, no matter where they're at, it's still possible. So to never give up, to continue to work hard, to continue to do good, and I also want, I also extended a thank you, because, because of them, I'm sitting here today, because a lot of them believed in me, and a lot of them who are now US citizens, they were able to vote. And I would not be here without them, so I also said that now I'm here, sitting here because of them, and I extended my thank you. And I also told them to enjoy this moment in a few moments where we will be signing this proclamation.
All right, thank you for that. Further comments from council members? Okay, well, I just want to say that, no, I had nothing opposed to Caesar Chavez himself, but I did also wanna say that, and I'm not gonna say this in Spanish or Dutch, um, we had one person requested meetings in Dutch, and my Dutch is worse than horrible, so. Um, but my grandfather and grandmother came here with eight children in nineteen thirty-eight, and they came here to work in the apple harvest. And they stayed, and so I am a child of seasonal farm workers as well. And as a matter of fact, when my wife and I first got married in nineteen eighty-six, the first job she held here was picking cherries in Granger. And so she and my sister worked together up on Cherry Hill and Granger, picking cherries. So, my hu- entire family has some experience in agricultural labor, when my wife was a child, she also worked in the fields. Um, not the way we do here, it was in Minnesota, they were pulling weeds in soybean fields, and they walked up and down those fields there, doing all the things that, farm kids do everywhere, this community is built on seasonal farm workers. The crops that we have here require human labor, they would not be harvested without human labor. As such, we value all of our seasonal farm workers, we value what they have done, as been mentioned several times before, we eat because of them, we eat because of you. Um, we have economic success in our valley because of the farm workers who come here year after year, some of whom have stayed here for many years, raised families here, and now own farms of their own, and that's exciting. That's the way it's supposed to work, you start out, you struggle for a little while, and then you attain success. I believe that people who struggle for a little while mature and they make better, better citizens, better adults, and they raise their family, so we definitely appreciate the work that you all do. There is no foreseeable end to our need for human labor in our fields, they simply cannot automate, harvesting some of the stuff that people are required to do, they cannot automate pruning trees, they cannot automate so many things, that it is necessary to have people here, so please don't think that anyone on council, myself included, has tried to, and I can only think of the Spanish word here, menos preciar, anybody in the room, um, certainly not the case. But, um, it, I, I think a lot of this stemmed from a misunderstanding, and so we will be moving forward. That being said, what is the desire of council on this item?
My second.
All right, we've got a motion by deputy mayor, second by Council Vasquez to approve a resolution to approve a Caesar's, Caesar Chavez Day proclamation, any debate on this item? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion passes. So. Thank you. You may be seated. Council, we do have a small problem here, if you look at your agenda, we have the approval of a Caesar Chavez proclamation, but we don't have any space where we read the Caesar Chavez proclamation. I, with, without objection, I will read it now. Okay. It is lengthy, I'm gonna take a drink of water first. And thank you for not asking me to read it in Spanish, because I'm out of practice with, uh, legalese. All right, City of Sunnyside, Washington, whereas Caesar Estrada Chavez, born March thirty-one nineteen twenty-seven, dedicated his life to improving the treatment, pay and working condition for farm workers. And whereas Caesar Chavez co-founded the National Farm Workers Association, which later became the United Farm Workers, and his leadership was pivotal in the American labor movement, and whereas Chavez's nonviolent approach, emphasizing strikes, boycotts, marches and fasts, changed the nature of labor activism, and underscored the importance of community involvement in securing rights and respect for workers. And whereas Caesar Chavez's work transcended agricultural labor to advocate for environmental justice, women's rights, non-discrimination on the basis of race or nationality, making him a broader civil rights leader, and whereas the City of Sunnyside, Washington recognizes the importance of it, acknowledging the contributions of all individuals who have worked to promote justice and equality. And whereas the principles of respect for others, service to the community, and social justice championed by Caesar Chavez, are reflective of his, of the values we hold in Sunnyside as migrant farm workers, are the driving force of our economy and the heart of our community. And whereas it is appropriate to honor the achievements and contributions of Caesar Chavez to our community and our nation by designating March thirty-one as Caesar Chavez Day in the City of Sunnyside, Washington. Now therefore, I Dean Brors, my mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me, by the laws of the state of Washington, on behalf of the Sunnyside City Council, do hereby proclaim Sunday, March thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, as Caesar Chavez Day, in the City of Sunnyside, and urge all citizens to celebrate this day in recognition of the legacy of Caesar Chavez, to reflect on the enduring importance of labor rights and to continue striving for justice for all workers. Testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at Sunnyside the twenty-fifth day of March, the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four. And signed.
The puzzle.
Moving on. Item C. Colin Basinger and Associates Agreement, consider approving a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Colin Basinger and Associates for City Manager Recruitment Services. Mister Martin.
Yes, and I'll turn this over to Human Resources Manager Navarro.
Mister Navarro.
Good evening, City Council, as a refresher to the discussion that we had during the study session, uh, what I have before you tonight is just the official contract, uh, with Colin Basinger and Associates for Recruitment Services, for the position of city manager that we previously discussed at our last meeting. Any questions?
Questions for Miss Navarro?
They give you a timeline when they're gonna start?
Um, they just sent me a timeline earlier today, we are looking at getting them some information by the end of the week. And then, once that information, once they receive that information, we will get started on setting up meetings to discuss that information and our timeline for, um, getting this going.
Further comments, Mister Deputy Mayor?
What kind of information are they requesting?
Just information in regards to the city, some history, um, current staffing levels, stuff like that.
Okay.
Ms. Vasquez.
So, I recall that this, this agency has already helped us get some other city, city managers.
Twice in the past, yes.
By chance, do you know if they have anything still with them regarding our history, regarding the city?
I don't know what information they were provided in those previous searches.
Okay, so maybe just an updated one?
Potentially, okay.
Yeah, it's been at least six years since we have been in contact with them, so they, there's a lot that's probably changed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
So, is some, something else, are, are we going to discuss, and I guess to see what information we give them, like, what are we looking for in a manager?
Okay, that will come up at a later meeting, uh, right now what they're getting is information on the city, our staffing, um, population, and, and, and those types of things, um, so that, that's pretty easy to get for staff, there's gonna be a time when we sit down and say, okay, what are we looking for, what, what, what's important to us? Um, and that will happen during a study session or a workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Peter.
In years past, um, we've had, uh, outings out for the public to meet the candidates too, are we gonna do that again?
Yes, I think that's been, um, extremely successful, for, what we did in the past is, uh, they would bring in a number of candidates. And council would have an opportunity to meet both individually and as a body with each of those candidates. And obviously through those times, we would begin to form an opinion of the candidates, and then what we would have would be a meet and greet. Uh, I remember the one time we held it over at Bonvino's, I don't remember the other time, but, um, the members of the public are invited. And then they get to meet the candidates as well, and then they give council feedback, and we get a chance to get the public's feel for these indivi- in individuals. And so, and that's important, because we see how they work with us, how they communicate with us, and we start to form an opinion. But the public deals from them, from a different side. Uh, we deal with them as their employer, and the public's going to see them as the face of the city, how do they interact with the public? And so, we can get some feedback, um, and we've received some very direct feedback from members of the public in the past. And some of it we heeded, and some of it we wished we had, and others, um, it was somewhat misinformed, but the public has been very clear on their opinions over the years, yeah. Other questions or comments? I did wanna bring up what I brought up during the study session, item eleven, administration of contracts, Sunnyside Contact, contract manager shall be, and he shall administer the contract for the city. Um, we're talking about the contract for Colin Basinger and Associates, correct? Right, okay, cause then, once a decision is made and the contract is put together for the manager, the, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and one other person will work together on putting the manager's contract together, so, all right. Is there any objection to that being our interim city manager, to be the contract manager for this?
No.
No. Okay, so, we will go ahead and put our interim city manager as the contract manager. And of course, he will inform us as the process goes as well, look for emails from him and all of that sort of thing, is, he is obligated to let us know what goes on. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Colin Basinger, Associates for City Manager Recruitment Services.
Well, my second.
All right, we've got a motion by Council Vasquez, second by Council Fausto, to approve a resolution, authorizing the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Colin Basinger and Associates for City Manager Recruitment Services, debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. I too vote aye, motion passes. Revolving Loan Fund Application. And the first one is Ibrahim, I'm trying to say that right, sorry, Mustafa Adams Wonderland, consider approving a resolution authorizing the distribution of a revolving loan fund in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and allowing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan fund recipient Ibrahim Mustafa, to make business improvements to Adams Wonderland. Mister Martin.
Yes, so, um, I have four of these items tonight, so I will, um, preface this by saying Mister Mustafa could not join us tonight. Um, um, he did respond and said he will not be able to be here tonight. Um, if you would like me to proceed with it, or if you would prefer for a later date when he can arrive, um, we can, could table it, until he's here, or if you would like to proceed with the application, we can do that as well.
Council, would you like to continue with this up, this process tonight, or would you like to have him come back at a later date?
I would prefer to table it, that way we can also get his presentation and get to hear him.
Okay, any other comments on this item? Yeah, I tend to agree with Ms. Vasquez, it is always helpful to have the, uh, applicant here, we can ask questions, and form an impression of the individual, so, absolutely, okay, we'll skip item D, we'll table that, I'm sorry, not skip, until our next regular meeting.
Perfect.
Item E. Uh, revolving loan fund application, Britton Moore, Bob's Burger, consider approving a resolution authorizing the distribution of a revolving fund, loan, revolving loan funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, and allowing city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan fund recipient, Britton Moore, to make business improvements to Bob's Burger. Mister Martin.
Yes, um, so, um, I have before you an application received from Britton Moore, who owns, owns Bob's Drive-In, and she submitted an application to the city for fifty thousand dollars as part of our revolving loan fund, to make, um, outside exterior, um, improvements, and, uh, really to her, to her, um, restaurant, and to, um, really turn it into a, a place, make it, make it a venue, make it to an, an, an attraction, a, a shining star here in Sunnyside. Um, she is with us tonight, I believe she has a, a small presentation for council, and, um, if you have any other questions for me, I would, um, like to turn it over to, to her.
Okay, Miss Moore, you'd like to approach the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and, uh, make a brief presentation.
Hi there, yes, uh, Britton Moore, Sunnyside, Washington, uh, grew up here, um, moved away, moved back in two thousand and ten. Um, I prepared some blue packets for council tonight, just a little extra information about, uh, myself and my husband and all of our community service that we've done in the last, I guess it's been fourteen years, something like that, yeah. So, uh, we're really excited about owning the drive-in, um, you know, remodeling the inside, making it a place where people wanna come, changing up some of the food items. Um, there is a lot that's next to us, it's quite large, it does not belong to us. Um, I think it's a little over two acres, I believe, is there, do they have the map of, of the drive-in, the aerial view? There's about a thousand pieces of paper in that packet, uh, but there's a, there's a, quite a large piece of property that the owners have decided that they want to start a project on that next year. What that project is, I don't know, I'm dying to find out, uh, but there's a little piece of land that we own, and then there's a, a little larger piece that we would like to own, um, to create an outside venue. Um, there's Bob's, you see the, the trees or shrubs, I guess that is off to the side. Basically, everything that's, that's gravel or brown does not belong to us, other than about five feet, see where the last white car is to the, to the bottom, kind of like a, a, a trick rectangular, type pie shape, no, piece of pie, I guess.
Yeah. Piece of pie.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so is owned by us, which we can build on and create an outside, a small outside venue. What we're looking at is just maybe where it's lightly shaded brown before it goes to the gray, that piece right there, um. For parking and for an outside venue. This outside venue, we would have uh lighting and ele- electrical work and and a place where people can, um, if the Lions Club wanted to come down and raise money for something, they could do that. Um, we can use it for um, the officers, if they wanna showcase their canines or drones or, or anything like that. Uh, but it would be a place for the community to be able to use that. Class reunions, as you know, um, a lot of people that went to high school would go to Bob's Drive-In for lunch, uh, very vastly and then get back to school. So it's, it's kind of a well-known place. Uh, so class reunions, anything that you can think of, we could use that space for. Um, and as I said earlier tonight, um, in the earlier meeting, uh, the more revenue that Bob's can bring in, the more revenue we can give back. We just donated seven hundred and fifty dollars to the, the Fire Department for their benevolent fund. Um, we gave the VFW seven hundred dollars, uh, just in December, and then we have an event for the Sunnyside Police Department coming up in April, that we'll do actually at Bob's uh Drive-In. Um, and these are items of, for the crisis fund with the, with the police department. If they've got kids or a family that they've gotta move in an emergency domestic situation, they can put them in a hotel. It's money they don't have to come to the city for immediately. They can just, they have access to it. Um, VFW, as you know, it's hard for these small clubs to keep the lights on, keep the bills paid. So we named three burgers after these three different departments, Fire Department, Police Department, and, and the VFW, um, to give back. And we'd like to be able to do more of that. And this is a big part of it. So having an outside venue where I can get uh, uh, actually double my staff. So, a lot of people looking for jobs these days, single moms, um, kids, kids coming back from college. I always keep their space for them when they run off to college. I, I keep it open for them when they wanna come back in the summer. So, it's, it's really it just really, um, I, I think that, you know, everyone goes to minors, right? Everyone knows where minors is. It'd be nice to have, have one of those in Sunnyside, um, a place where the kids can go after sporting events. When Sunnyside uh beats them at an event, they can go and have a hamburger before they go home, right? So, I, I just, I'm excited about it. Um, the fifty thousand, I know that it was two years in business, but since Bob's has been there for, since nineteen forty-seven, almost sixty years, um, we qualify for the fifty thousand. And that's what would make this project move a lot quicker. So, I ask you to consider um, looking at us for that, that loan application. And if you have any questions, you can always call me or email me, um, if you have any questions now.
Questions for Ms. Moore?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm seeing your folder and it says, I see Firehouse Burger, the black and blue cheeseburger, and I see a smorgary burger. So I also see, it says a portion of the proceeds will go towards the Sunnyside. Like, for example, the Firehouse Burger will go towards the Sunnyside Firefighters Fund.
Right.
Is this all the time? Like, anytime we purchase a Firehouse Burger?
Yeah, yeah, so every time a, a burger's purchased, we put that money aside. These were padded a little bit. It was the first year of business, and so people weren't familiar cuz it was a new item on the menu. So I added more money to that. We donated more than actual burgers were purchased. But yes, going forward, you know, we'd like to do that. Um, I know that Zach from the Fire Department had a special guest that they were trying to get to bring to the Tri-Cities for the surrounding area for, for nurses and, and people in, in the uh firefield. Um. And it was gonna cost a lot of money. So, you know, it can go towards special needs that they have that year. You know, they don't have to put it towards the benevolent fund if they have that already set forth, but yeah, we'd like to keep that going.
Other questions?
Um, I'll just add a little bit of background to you. I think I should probably do that for the, the audience that, so the these, um, this is a new, this is a new process. This is the revolving loan um, application. We're using part of our ARPA um, allotment as this process are to, to um, to, to conduct this. Um, so these applications are viewed and they're processed through our Community and Economic Development Commission, um, which the city council established, I believe, two years ago now, somewhere in that.
Closer to three.
Three years ago now. Um, so they'll review the applications, they'll go through the they'll go through the business plan with the applicants. They'll invite them, they'll do a small presentation in front of the group. And then the, the uh Community Economic Development Commission then forwards their recommendation onto the city council for their fa- this final approval. Um, the Community and Economic Development Commission did, did um, review Bob's Drive-In as a, as a historic business that's been here for, for many, many years. And which is why the, the request is set up the way it is exactly.
Further questions?
I have something. So with this expansion, you, you say you wanna increase, you wanna double the employees? How, how many employees?
It would, it takes quite a bit. Um, when we're busy, we need about five or six employees there. I've got about sixteen right now. So with an outside venue and those tables fill up when, during our busy season, spring and summer and fall, you need a lot of staff cuz you're going in and out. So, yeah, we'd employ at least another twelve people.
Okay.
At least. And we can make a veggie burger for the, for the adoption, for the pet adoption.
Further questions?
Ms. Mark, do, do you, do you have a, a timeline as uh for, for the renovations, like, if, if you get this money, uh, you know, what, what what timeline are we looking at? I, you say giving back to the community, and that's amazing, especially it's a place where like our, our kids can go, and if they come and play sport. Um, I used to be one of those kids that would stop at minors after soccer games, so I mean, it was a really great experience, but just wondering if you have a timeline?
Uh, my timeline is a lot different than the people that own the property. Um, m- mine would be right away. Um, if they're considering building next year, we're gonna have to get a surveyor out there because we're gonna have to have some, some definite barriers, um, and, and roads and, and parking set up. So the sooner the better. I'm hoping, the, the partner has been in Mexico, we've had several talks with them. Right now, it's just about how much that's gonna cost and how much land they're gonna allow to give up, to, to, for us to purchase. So, um I would like to say that I have some definite answers by the end of, of June or, or sooner. I know that seems far away, but these things take time.
It's not far away.
Yeah, I know it's not, it's close.
Other comments, questions?
I got a comment.
Mr. Beeler.
Looking forward to another ribbon cutting.
Yeah, that was fun. We had a, we had a great ribbon cutting, we had a band, lots of food. Um, I like to do some chili cook-offs in the fall. I'd like to be at a place where uh we kind of have a hayride start at Bob's Drive-In and, and back up at Bob's Drive-In. I mean, there's just, it's endless. So, you know, it's something for everybody, but.
Ms. Ripley?
I think it sounds like a great idea. It'll bring more people to town and more employees and.
Yeah, we can do a lot of invites with car clubs from out of town. Um, bringing those people to town, they're gonna buy gas, might stay overnight, they might go to other restaurants. So getting us on the map. I, I did spend some money this year and got us in the Yakima Valley Tourism Guide. And that has brought in a lot of people, actually. It was money well spent. A lot of people from out of town, so.
All right, well, Ms. Moore, I do, I do wanna just say one, couple of things. First one is a correction. Um, it's getting close to, really uncomfortably close to eighty years. Not sixty.
Yeah.
And, and, and also I think this is a fantastic idea. I wish you owned more property around there and were able to uh acquire that because I think you've got amazing potential there, not only for outside seating area, but also for expanding your inside seating area because it it's tight. I know you guys did a big remodel in there when you first started there, but uh, it's a small space and there's only so much you can do with it. So I, I wish you had the space to do that cuz I think it'd be really cool, and I think you could outdo minors, honestly.
I hope so.
But. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
All right, council members. Discussion. Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Deputy Mayor, second by Counsel Ripley to approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of a revolving loan fund in the amount of twenty five thou- oh, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong line. I saw that number as, oops, that's wrong. All right, let's try that again. Approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of revolving loan funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and allowing city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan run recipient, Britton Moore, to make business improvements to Bob's Burgers. Debate on this item.
I do just have one comment. So I know that you just, you're a new owner to this place. And this, this is really impressive, so I just wanna say thank you for picking this up and, you know, keep, keeping this business going here in Sunnyside. And thank you for giving back to our community because it's not something a lot of people do, and this is really, really motivating to see. So thank you for doing that.
Nice second that.
I thirded.
Further cut, for, further items? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. A two vote aye. Motion passes. Item F. Revolving Loan Pl- Fund Application, Iliana Martinez and Job Wise, Sunnyside Sun. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the distribution of a revolving loan fund in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and allowing city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan fund recipients, Iliana Martinez and Job Wise, to acquire the Sunnyside Sun. Mr. Martin?
Yes, so um, this is a, this is a really, really neat application. So, um, I was uh, approached by these two individuals who um currently work at the, at the Sunnyside Sun, and they kind of pitched an id- an idea at me. And we, we brought it over to the Community and Economic Development Commission and reviewed it there, but there, they are um looking to purchase, use the, use the funds here to purchase the Sunnyside Sun and make it a, a local, locally owned newspaper once again. So currently it is owned by, and, and out of town, I'd say, I believe he lives in Idaho. I'll, I will ask you to invite the, the applicants up here in just a second. But I believe he, he um lives in Idaho and has given the, some of the, the current staff there the opportunity to purchase the newspaper. Um, so the, uh, the commission viewed this application as a long, longstanding application and um um, they recommended a, an amount of fifty thousand dollars to, are recommending the amount of fifty thousand dollars to the city council.
They'd like to ask our applicants to come forward and, and make their presentation if they like. I note a little enthusiasm.
I'm always excited to be here.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourselves and uh let us know what you got.
My name is Iliana Martinez. I live up on Columbia Avenue. I've been a Sunnyside resident my entire life. I graduated in two thousand and ten from Sunnyside High School. Um, I have a crazy dog, and, you know, I live here. I'm founded here, I grew roots here. I'm here.
I'm Job Wise. I moved here in two thousand and eight. And uh, but you might know my relatives that are at the high school. And uh, my uncle lived in Grandview and worked at the high school there, so I could say I have roots too. But they're relatively, relative roots. Um, but yeah, I've been here since two thousand and eight. Worked at the paper ever since I moved here.
All right, so tell us a little bit about what you're, what you're planning to do here.
Start with some background info. Um, the Sunnyside Sun has been a staple in Sunnyside in our community since its founding day in May of nineteen oh one by its founder, William Hitchcock. In the nineteen eighties, Sunnyside's two publications, the Sunnyside Sun and the Daily News merged to create the Daily Sun News, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with. Um, and they were owned by an entity out of Oregon. In two thousand and eighteen, the Sun was purchased by a gentleman out of Grainfield, Idaho, and he remains the current owner. Um, until, you know, hopefully, the end of this month. Um, being approved for the revolving loan fund would help my team bring this ownership home where it belongs. Um, our tiny but mighty team of fund staff members live in Sunnyside, we're based here, we're all familiar faces at local events and high school sports. Job here actually just stopped his parent teacher conferences within the Sunnyside School District.
That's why I'm out of breath.
And that's why he can't breathe. Um, the council previously discussed being able to share information for our community members, like the revolving loan fund and making that information more accessible to um new and existing business owners, and I am so proud to be able to say that we can do just that. Um, we are able to share information like the revolving loan fund, like the Cesar Chavez block parties, um, like all the information of events that go on in Sunnyside and our surrounding areas. And we share that to our website and to our more than eighteen thousand Facebook followers online. Just recently, our State's Department of Ecology reached out to me about their youth summer jobs program, and I was able to put a short story together for our website and our Facebook page, where it received more than a hundred and fifty shares and comments from parents tagging their kids or tagging their their parent friends to, you know, share this information with your kids. Your kids, you know, fourteen-year-olds can't get regular jobs, so the Department of Ecology allows them to get a job, you know, learn the ways of that, and we were able to help the Department of Ecology share that through our website and our Facebook page. So, the local newspaper, we believe, is an important part of our community because we cover our hometown and our people, our events. We aim to highlight local events and businesses in Sunnyside and our surrounding areas. And my favorite thing is amplify the voices of our community in the best way that we know how.
I would like, oh, just to add real quick, earlier in the meeting, there's spoken about the, the museum and the history of our town. Um, the newspaper and really is the history of our town. Um, being written every week. Um, and just to have that to, for future generations in our generation now.
The Sunnyside Sun in the past and the Daily Sun News in the past have partnered with the museum and created our pictorial history of Sunnyside, volumes one and two. Volume one, which is unfortunately sold out and out of print. Volume two, we still have in stock, and we actually just got a surge of purchases for that book, like a lot of people are interested in seeing this, seeing the history of Sunnyside and, you know, what pictures look like back in the day, and hopefully with the sales of that book and with the growth of our business, um, once we become the owners, we'll be able to put out a volume three.
Awesome, thank you. And I do wanna just, one, one item for council, um, the Sunnyside Sun is the city's paper of record, so we publish our public notices in there and, and all the informations that people need, meeting information, that sort of thing is all published in, in that paper as well, so. And because it's published in the paper, it also goes out on the Facebook page and website and all that sort of thing, so. There's just more information. Questions or comments for our presenters here?
Are you gonna bring back the newscast carriers?
I wish we could bring back the kids, but we deliver everything through USPS now. It's just easier for us and you know, easier on the kids, you know, during the winter.
First job.
Really?
Yes. Years ago.
Yeah, it's just easier, like during the summer when it gets way too hot around here, in the winter where it gets really, really, really cold. It's just a little tough on the kids. So we decided just to switch to the USPS just to make it easier for.
It was my son's first job too.
Yeah.
I, I swear it made him a good kid.
Yeah, I always miss those kids. We got to know them really well.
Yeah.
Over the years.
Yeah, they came banging on your door begging for their five bucks, right?
Yeah.
There are opposite opportunities for kids. Uh, we have posted uh, um, some interns at our, our our place of high school students and, um, one of them even ended up making the high school, uh Sunnyside High School newspaper start up again, so.
Oh, nice.
Nice.
There's still opportunities.
And the, the high school actually partners with us and we print their, their newspaper for the high school as well, and we help the kids out if they have questions, like how to write a story or like what's any journalism aspect that the kids out, like some, sometimes they'll come visit our office, sometimes Joe Pea will go to the meetings at the school. And also another thing I should probably brag about is we're an award-winning publication. Actually got to go to Kennewick, um, two years ago, right? When it was hosted here locally, I got to go to Kennewick and they hosted the Washington Newspaper Publishers Association Better Newspaper Contest where we brought home a ton of awards.
Nice.
Throwing that out there, I'm really proud of that.
Further comments or questions, Ms. Vasquez?
So I would like to share that I had already heard your guys' presentation at the meeting, right? And I was shocked to know that the owner is in Idaho. I did not know that. I always thought, you know, it was already um, city-based, right? Someone had it here, but, so that was very shocking, and I think it would be really important and significant to bring that to our community. So, I also wanted to say um, speaking of that, so you guys are planning to use this money to buy them out?
Yes.
So that would be?
Purchasing the existing business. The, actually, the current owner has been more or less mentoring and training us to be business owners. So he's like showed us the ropes. He's been a newspaper publisher forever. And he kinda showed us the ropes on how to be business owners, how to run a newspaper better. Cuz I actually started in two thousand and thirteen there, and I started out in production and graphic design, and I just kinda moved my way up. And now hopefully I get to be a business owner of a staple in our community with my partner here, Job.
Okay, and then, so that this fifty thousand would go directly to buy them out, or would you have some leftover money for room to modify things?
Well, the original asking price was sixty thousand.
Okay.
Um, but we are still in um, negotiations, I guess you'd say, with the current owner, so it, there, some of that loan might be go to upgrades, it depends on. There are some of that loan might be, go to upgrades. It depends on our negotiations with the owner.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So you, you have five staff members. Um, will each of them own a piece or is just two of you that are gonna own it?
Well, right now it's gonna be the two of us, but hopefully in the future we'll be able to do. Employee shares.
Okay. And then hopefully you don't sell to outsiders? Never, okay.
Days here.
Good. Just one more thing, um, I know right now you just have the, the Wednesday publication. Any plans of expanding it?
Um, not as of yet.
Okay.
It all depends on the support. Unity. A lot of our advertising comes from the legal notices that uh the mayor mentioned, but also of the. Advertising of local businesses in our paper and.
And subscribers.
And subscribers, but the advertising is key. So, um, right now it would stay weekly.
Okay.
But we do post updates on our website every day, so for, you know, if something happens, we post updates on our website that day. Once Kenny, my reporter, writes it up, or I write it up, or Job writes it up.
So it, so we are daily, just in print weekly.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Further questions?
And you do more than just newspapers, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
I got magazines, I got a website, I got social media advertising.
Yeah. Yeah, we have special publications that come out at least once a month.
Yeah.
If not more.
Actually, this Wednesday, we have our Valley Farm, Valley Farm and Home section with stories about agriculture and. Health. I have a story by actually two local business owners, Brittany Byma and Megan Tyler. They wrote two um. Articles for me, so I also have correspondence here in, in the valley that helped me out there too.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that information. All right, council. Need further discussion on this item? What is the desire council on this item?
I move to approve the loan fund for Leana Martinez and Job Wise to acquire the Sunnyside Sun.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Council Vasquez, second by Council Beeler. To approve the resolution authorizing distribution of revolving loan funds in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and allow city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan fund recipients. In Leana Martinez and Job Wise to acquire the Sunnyside Sun. Debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. Congratulations. I am one hundred percent in favor of keeping local papers local. And over the years, I've got to know many of the reporters that have worked for the Sun and have befriended a number of them over the years, so. Then, next item. Revolving loan fund application Shelby Moore, Heartlinks. Consider approving a rev- resolution. Authorizing the distribution of a revolving loan fund in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and allowing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan fund recipients. Shelby Moore to make business improvements to the Heartlinks facility on Outlook Road, Sunnyside, Washington. And Ms. Moore, do you want to? Come up and make your presentation? Or answer questions or whatever it would be. Why don't you give us some background information and give us a chance to ask some questions?
Sure, um, my name's Shelby Moore. I'm the executive director for Heartlinks. Um, Heartlinks has been in this community uh for the last forty-six years. Uh, we started in Sunnyside. We just recently moved our office to Grandview, uh, having outgrown our property and on Outlook Road. Uh, we then decided to um. Make some improvements to the Outlook Road property and transition it to a, an adult family home. So we are requesting fifty thousand to help the staffing costs of starting that adult family home. Uh, an adult family home, for those that don't know, is twenty-four hour um skilled care in a. Home-like setting for six people. Um. The staffing, of course, associated with twenty-four hour caregiving is pretty astronomical, especially when you're getting off the ground and starting. To build the residence that would live there. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Moore? Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You say you could, you could have six people living in, in the Sunnyside facility?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have anybody now, or is it just, you're waiting for this to kind of?
We have a waiting list of about fifty people.
About fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Wow.
There's never a shortage of people needing a place to stay.
Yeah.
How many staff are you now?
Uh, that work for Heartlinks, sixty-five. Um, an adult family home to properly staff it will take ten to twenty people.
And this money would be specifically for improvements that are needed to the facility?
No, it would be for staffing.
For staffing?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Beeler?
Will you have doctors there, or is this just trained uh nurses or RNs?
Uh, it would be a trained RN overseeing trained CNAs, so certified nursing assistants, but our medical director would oversee the whole facility.
Deputy Mayor?
So you say you have a waiting list of fifty people. Um, is it fifty people from Sunnyside or the surrounding areas? And how do you, how do you pick who you are gonna serve?
So when you're. Kind of cultivating a adult family home environment, you want to make sure that people can live together. Um, so we would. Essentially start going down our list once we get our, our licensure and. If, for example, we have a lot of people with dementia, we'll make sure that we have everyone living there with dementia to make sure that people are the most comfortable that they can be. Um, but yeah, uh, mostly from the valley, uh, but primarily Sunnyside.
Okay. Further question, Ms. Vasquez?
And it looks like your facility is on Outlook Road.
Hmm. Yep.
And it's gon- going to be new?
Uh, no, it's.
Been there?
It's been there. Um, we worked out of there for about twenty years, the hospice facility, and then um. Just grew out of it, uh, make, and we're, we were able to transition it back to being a home.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ripley?
I like that idea of the adult family home. We need a lot more of those around here.
We real- we really do, and the ones that have been uh c- closed and um. Only having a cup, a handful of options is just not feasible for our community and, and truly it. Uh, opening the adult family home came out of our patients, our hospice patients not having a place to go.
I do remember at one time having three or four adult family homes in town. Um, and yeah, with time, the owner of the facility retires, uh, wants to move on. It is a huge commitment for one family to do, and it would often be uh a husband and wife working together. And maybe they would have one employee or maybe they wouldn't, but uh it's a huge commitment, and I think the burnout rate is pretty high if you have a small number of people working in that situation. And so um I used to get into several of those here in town and around the valley, and I'm seeing fewer and fewer of those. And so, yeah, this is, this is something that I see and many people have recognized as a need in our, in our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Proust?
Uh, Ms. Moore, uh, with, with, you said this, this money would go towards uh staffing? How many more staff would you be able to acquire with this money or are you looking to?
About ten to twenty.
Ten to twenty with the fifty thousand?
Hmm.
Okay. May I ask, wh- where do you uh get most of, of, of your, of your funding from right now? Is it grants, through the county?
For, for our hospice and palliative care services, it's primarily funded through Medicare and fundraising.
Medicare, okay, okay.
Hmm. Uh, the adult family home itself, though, would be uh paid for by private funds or through Medicaid. So. Just depends on who's living there.
Oh, something, um, I'm looking at your website. Hopefully it's the right one. Uh, it says that you, you take volunteers to help also, right?
Hmm.
There are like a large number of volunteers that do help and, and how do you reach out to people that want to volunteer besides your website?
Yeah, we have about seventy volunteers um that were, uh, live and work from Tri-Cities to Natchez. Um, but primarily the people that choose to volunteer for Heartlinks are those that um we have served their loved ones or their families, so. Um, that's where we typically reach out to people.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. What is the desire council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by the deputy mayor, second by Council Ripley to approve a resolution authorizing the distribution of a revolving loan fund. In the amount of fifty thousand dollars and allowing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the revolving loan fund recipient Shelby Moore to make business improvements to the Heartlinks revolving. Heartlinks facility on Outlook Road. Debate on this item? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I two vote aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Sunnyside Museum Agreement.
Yes, enough. This one will be mine once again.
All right, Mr. Martin?
Yes, so um. As um, as we heard in public comments earlier, uh, we've been working with the, the mu- museum board, uh, me, the Public Works Director and. Um, City and Dewey, the city planner, and we've put together an agreement to. Um, to basically al- allow the museum board to construct a, a, a facility, a storage facility. On the parcel to the south of them. Um, we'll, we will. Um, allocate the, the parcel to them. They'll build the facility, make their improvements, and then we will receive the facility back. Um, within just a, a few short months of um, starting this, this project, so. Um, do you have any, do you have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Similar to what you guys did with the uh skate.
Yes, 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 very similar to what we did with the, the agreement that we worked out with Rotary. Where we gave a portion of the park to Rotary. Rotary constructed the, the skate park and then we received it back once they were completed with construction.
Hmm. Mr. Beeler?
Timeline on getting the big building built?
Oh, I would imagine it's probably pretty quick. Um, it's a prefabbed building. It'll probably be, I'm gonna guess the foundation is gonna be fairly simple to, to. Um, go um. Straight, yeah, straightforward. I would, I would imagine probably a, a month or two at, at most to get the building up. Yeah. Yeah.
Further questions or comments? Hearing, yeah, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Just, just a comment. Um, and I appreciate Siskinard, you know, taking care of the museum. I know it's hard work. I, I was there. For that opening you have for, you know, for volunteers. Um, and let's just take pride in, in the history, right? It's just uh. Recognize everybody in Sunnyside and, and all the achievements and, you know, let's not forget our history and. You're doing just that, so thank you.
And I'd like to echo that, you know, I uh, I, I used to live next door to people who had worked in the museum and served in the museum for. Boy, I don't know how many years were they in the museum. Good grief, I, you know, they. Do you have any idea? Was it thirty years? Was it forty years? The Saraces? Right, so they, and they served until. The nineteen or two thousand. Two thousand ten-ish, yeah, they were still there when we lived in our house. I want to say it was after two thousand ten, because I moved in or next door next to them in uh. Two thousand eleven, and so. Um, the story of our museum is a historical museum. It's a story of Sunnyside. And as was mentioned with the, the presentation for the, for the newspaper, um, we've got quite a history. You know, the newspaper goes back to nineteen oh one, which is longer than the history of the city. And our museum documents, all of that keeps that up there for us to see, ta- tells the story of members of our community pioneers and, and some current members. Families, um, and all sorts of families. Um, migrant farm worker families. We met, we recognize Cesar Chavez today. Um, there's a whole display that was uh up there for our, our farm workers, ag workers. And so, um, it really does a good job of trying to recognize all members of the community. And I'm just. Yeah, I think it's just something that we really need to support. Ms. Ripley?
Is everything that you're gonna put in the storage place, is it downstairs or? It's everywhere in the museum? Wow.
Yeah.
I've heard it's quite packed. That'll be good to get a storage if this passes.
Well, and if you, I've, to me, it feels safer as well. You know, I've seen stuff stored in the attic. I've seen stuff stored in some of the storage buildings and that sort of thing, and. It just feels safer to have it in a, a new building that's secure and airtight, hopefully bug tight. And stop some of that stuff from getting damaged, so.
One more question. I know there's, there's a few storage trailers and little sheds out there. Is the plan to get rid of those once the building? They're gonna be gone? Okay. Make it look a little, a little bit more. Got it.
I have a comment.
Ms. Proust?
Uh, I, yeah, I, I too want to echo my, my colleagues here. Um, thank you for keeping uh the spirit and the history of, of Sunnyside. Um, alive and going. Um, I remember I walked into that museum uh in the summer. I think it was with you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, when you had an open house and you were um seeking volunteers and. It was pretty impressive to see some of the older items, like the typewriters and, and I know that's not, that doesn't go too far back, but it was. It was really great to, to, to witness a lot of those pieces, and then I remember going. Um, a little bit in, more into, i- into the museum itself and then coming across. Um, the display of, of, of the migrant farm workers and really just tracking their diaspora. Of i- into the valley and then going into those quinceañera dresses, and I just really also want to acknowledge. Tony Soto, who is here in, 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 in our space today, because it does take a collective effort and Sunnyside is a makeup of so many different peoples. From different backgrounds and experiences. So, um, just really stuck my eye. Um, you know, when we say, you know, nothing comes. In, in ones, it always is a collaborative effort, so um, keep doing what you're doing, uh, keep displaying um, our, our history. Um, all of our histories, um, and I really can't wait to see what y'all put together in the near future.
All right, thank you. Oh, Ms. Ms. Vasquez?
I too showed up to your guys' open house and actually went down to the basement and it was so cluttered up. And, you know, I was looking at everything and I hear there's items that don't even belong to Sunnyside. However, I'm excited for you guys to start decluttering and I'm excited for you guys to get the storage space so you guys can start getting. That time and space to start remodeling and doing some upgrades for Sunnyside, so thank you so much for your hard work.
All right. Any more comments? Hearing none. What is the desire council on this item?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Council Ripley, second by Deputy Mayor to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Sunnyside Museum Board to construct a storage facility. At seven eighteen South Fourth Street, Sunnyside. Debate on this item. Hearing none. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. I know this is something that has been desired by the museum board for a long time, so it's nice to see this happening. Item I, City Council Study Sessions, provide direction. So we have um. Now, today we uh did our first or second study session. Um, before the meeting, so we started at five thirty. We had a study session where we discussed all the items that were going to be on the agenda. It was an opportunity for us. As well as audience members to hear what was going to be on the agenda, hear some of the discussion that was on the agenda. And it serves to help us have all that information fresh in our mind because staff members can. Update us on things and familiarize us with all of the stuff that we need to know for the meeting, whereas with a regular workshop meeting, it would have been several weeks ago. And uh for some of us, it would have been in the dusty past and maybe difficult to remember some of the, some of the salient points that uh we had to talk about. So, um, staff would like some direction. They give us a couple of options here that they'd like to hear. Keep the trial study sessions through April or. Make the change to cancel workshops after April the first and add the study sessions. City Clerk Renteria can prepare an ordinance modifying the city, the Sunnyside Municipal Code to reflect this change. Um, council members, your opinion on this? Would you prefer to do a couple more and then reassess at the end of April, or would you like to just make the change permanent now? Mr. Beeler?
Having just two, and um I think they've been very. Well, taking care of everybody. Everybody loves them. Um, but I don't want to make a rash decision. I want to do a couple more just to see how everything flows. We haven't had a big item come up. Or we've had a couple of small items, but I think. Do it for the month of April and then bring it back. And then we can. See if we all agree to go ahead and make that permanent.
Okay, thanks, sir. Other comments, questions?
I would agree with Mr. Beeler, Councilor Beeler, and I too, I really like it. It's almost like a repeat, except the second time we get to actually take action. And it's more fresh in our minds, so I agree.
Yeah. Other comments?
I like it. I would rather us make a decision right now and, 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 and just solidify uh the schedule moving forward, but. The majority wants to give it, continue giving it a trial run, then. I digress.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I agree. We give it another month, Councilor Beeler, and um, suggestion, and also remind the audience that we do start. We will start at five thirty and we dis- majority of the discussion is there. So just in case you guys don't hear us ask as many questions or discussion, then. Um, that's when it's happening at the five thirty.
Ms. Ripley, would you like to make a comment?
It gives the citizens. The chance to hear what we're talking about and then talk about it during the council meeting, so. I'd say come at five thirty.
Well, one of the reasons that we've instituted this change, at least this trial change, is so that members of the community can come and hear the debate. And the discussion, and then during the time of public comment, as you witnessed today, come and speak to some of the issues that are before council. And express your opinion on these things. Um, so, yeah, we like to hear from you. We like to hear your opinions. And so, that I think is important. That was the reason we instituted this in the first place, and so. And so I think, like my colleagues, I think this idea is working well. I would like to continue it for two more meetings in the month of April and see if we still like it just as much, or perhaps there's suggested changes to improve uh the way it works. Uh the only thing that I would say to dislike about it is the fact that we're limited to one hour or slightly less, because our regular meeting starts at six thirty, and that is publicly noticed, and it has to happen at six thirty. So um that puts a little bit of stress on us, but that does keep our our meetings concise and to the point. So it's not all bad. It's just we have to learn to work within that schedule. And I think we are probably fully capable of doing that. So if you, as audience members, community members, have feedback for council, please let us know sometime after the meeting outside in your regular conversations and your texts and your emails to us. Um we'd absolutely love to hear feedback from you guys as well on this. So all right, so does that help? We're gonna continue for two more meetings. We'll talk about it at the end of April. All right, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. We are currently recruiting four vacancies on civil service, Planning Commission, Lodging Tax Advisory Commission, or Committee, sorry, Municipal Airport Advisory Board, and the Sunnyside Arts Commission. You can apply online, stop by City Hall to pick up an application or contact Ms. Renteria. All right, if you know of anybody or you yourself would like to serve, please get involved. You don't have to be on City Council to be involved. This is a great way to be involved and be a part of what's going on in the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat that list again?
I certainly can. Um civil service, Planning Commission, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Municipal Airport Advisory Board, and Sunnyside Arts Commission.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, other reports, announcements, and/or questions by council. And we'll start with Mr. Beeler.
I have nothing.
Okay.
I've been busy.
Totally understand. Ms. Vasquez.
Yes, so I actually, I would like to just share this with everyone. And so there's an Easter brunch going on. Lions Club is helping, and it's also with the city of Sunnyside. So it's an Easter brunch, March thirtieth, which will be this Saturday. So I encourage you guys all to show up. It's three dollars a plate of breakfast, so that's a steal, right? Um come, it's from ten AM. There will be two sessions from ten AM to eleven AM, and then there'll be a second one from eleven thirty to twelve thirty. And it's going to be taking place at the Sunnyside Community Center. So I hope to see you all there. I will be there serving, so I'll see you there. And um along with that, there's going to be Easter egg hunt for the children. So if you have your grandchildren, nephews, nieces, um take them. It's really important to get involved with the community and enjoy a great time. It's exciting. So come in, let's make, let's show up for what our community is doing. And I also wanted to share that I don't know if y'all know, but I am part of the Lions Club, and right now I'm taking charge of trying to start up a Leo club. So that's really exciting. So I am looking for youth. I will be contacting the high school so we could do uh meet and greet, so we could introduce what this club does. Sunnyside has never had a Leo club. So it's a really good thing to bring to the youth so that they can also stay busy outside of the school district. I know that the school district provides amazing clubs. They have Key Club, they have Latino Culture Club. I was part of Key Club my four years and there's a lot that they provide. However, it would be really great to also provide clubs that are outside of school. And this would be a perfect opportunity for that, where the youth would be able to exercise leadership, experience, and opportunity. And the their quote, their motto is um where there's a need, there's a Leo. So I'm excited to start this. So if you do know any youth in the between the ages thirteen to eighteen, um let me know, and that way I could get them noted down so we could get this club started and going here in Sunnyside. And that's all I would like to share.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. Ms. Ripley.
Yeah, I went to a, well, me and Counselor Frosto went to a YV cog meeting. And uh they had really good uh information on um what was it, the Catholic services donated land for the um it would maybe I'll just pass this on to Vicky Frosto. Where where you built, where you put the hours in to build.
Uh homes for humanity. Habitat for Humanity, excuse me. So, yeah, Habitat for Humanity did a really great presentation.
Uh huh. So great, I forgot it.
So what, they're gonna put like fourteen or eighteen houses planned in Sunnyside?
I think it was six, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Well, I know they've they've got aspirations for some things in Sunnyside. I know I talked to the director a few months ago and and he was sharing with some of the things that he wants to do in Sunnyside. These are great opportunities for volunteers. Um building community.
Get more.
And it's great for um the people who are gonna move into the house. They've gotta put some sweat equity into their home as well. And it's just an amazing project. I've had the opportunity to work on two, and I was able to uh actually give some land to Habitat, and they built a house on on some land that I was able to give away. This was thirty years ago. But um yeah, I have a huge supporter of Habitat, so I'm excited. Sorry, I didn't need to jump into your report. I apologize for that. You guys go right ahead. Okay, Ms. Frost.
Um, oh, I I mean, just to add to that very quickly, because I think I have it at the top of my mind, and and please help me, because I'm gonna probably struggle on this, but the the bridge um um going uh down to to uh I ninety uh going down to to Yakima and then on the way back will be under construction for the next three years, I believe. So it's gonna be an ongoing project. I believe that um at some point, there it's gonna turn into a one lane. Um and then they're gonna open up uh both lanes um when the holidays hit. Um but it's going to take some time for it to be fully constructed and rebuilt.
May I ask which bridge that is?
Is it the bank? Yeah, I need.
On the I ninety bridge, the Vantage, crossing, crossing the Columbia? Okay, yes.
Vantage. Pretty sure. I don't wanna spread misinformation. Yes. Yeah. No, it's not that one? Did someone say no?
Oh, okay.
That one is, no, that one is under construction. I saw signs for there that on Saturday, so.
Okay. Wanna make sure I have the right stuff. And then I believe the the bridge to Mapton, uh they expect to open that up at the end of this year. Um weather permitting, and if there's no other, yeah, issues, um sudden issues, uh so expect that to happen. They didn't promise anything, but they're hoping and they have their fingers crossed for the end of this year. Um and then um I have uh three more things. Um uh I really just wanna um again, um congratulate um our colleagues for uh voting uh for the Sessa Chavez proclamation. They're really making history together since it is signed for the first time in Sunnyside history today. Um and to commemorate such a special moment, I would like for us to hopefully take a picture, since we have Iliana still here here in the room. And then we have Jasper from Yakima Herald, and I think we still have a couple members from UFW if they would stick around and if y'all would be open and willing to take a picture with them uh as soon as we wrap up here. I would think it would be a great moment to capture. Um talk about keeping history alive, right? Um and then I I did wanna ask and take a moment uh to get an update about the translation services that was brought up during council or during our meeting today, and I just haven't heard about the process.
We were, we were waiting on um Counselor Vasquez to offer us the app. Yes, so.
Information?
Yeah, so I got an email and I'll be sending that to Chief Lehman. And then I'll be also providing that to all of you.
Okay, perfect. And then we can add it to the planning schedule as soon as we review that.
Yes, I was planning on adding that to the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Vasquez.
Yeah, I believe we did have one individual who commented on using apps and that sort of thing in in this. And so, yes, we are, that is one of the options that council is considering to try to facilitate the uh translation services and do a do a better job. But we're trying to pick the best we can. And there's not as many options as we had hoped, and there was one service that we really liked that backed out. And so we're kinda scrabbling to find the best one here.
Okay. And the last item, um I did send uh the city clerk, Ms. Ventoria, some pictures uh to share with you all of our very eventful weekend. Um and I I'm still sore just speaking about it. Um so uh over the, oh, on Friday, actually, uh Deputy Mayor and I really just had the honor um of experiencing the day in the life of a firefighter. And um Chief Hallbrake isn't here. Um but I uh wanted to to really just extend my gratitude for our firefighters, our paramedics that really just keep our community safe. Uh during Friday, we were really put to the task. Uh we were climbing up the the firefighter uh truck ladders. We were doing simulations. We were actually uh uh putting out fires, li- like literal fires. There's a Sean, uh no, David, who was my shadow, so we were assigned a firefighter. Um this is David. Uh Deputy Mayor Galvano was assigned Sean. Uh was assigned to Sean, so they would literally uh go with us everywhere. Look, there's me putting out a fire. Oh, my gosh. Um and David so graciously helping me with the hose. Um uh I almost left Chief Hallbrake with one less staff and one less firefighter, because I let go of that hose and it just started swinging everywhere and it hit David on the head. And um so uh I mean, these people, our firefighters, um are are, I mean, these men and women that are really putting their life on the line to keep us safe should be congratulated, should be supported. And um I just commit, and I'm sure we all, I can speak for all of us here to commit and make sure that we are also taking care of them uh because the work isn't easy. I'm still sore from going through some of these simulations. There's us trying, I think this is the CPR task, right, where we're putting someone in an ambulance, and the ambulance actually took off and they were uh asking me to do math on the spot. And I was like, I don't know. I'm just, I'm tired. Um and uh so, yeah, just some of the pictures that really just capture the experience of of the weekend. Um there's me just contemplating life and wondering why I'm there. Um I wasn't made to be a firefighter at all. That's why I'm here. Um there's Deputy Galvano. This was, I believe, uh we were fitting on um our gear, right? And he was still really happy. This is when we didn't know what we were going into. Um yeah, this, when we still had um some movement in our limbs and 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 before any of all that action. I mean, and these things, y'all, they're they're thirty pounds on you. I mean, so imagine going into a fire um with that mask on, you got that big tank on you. I mean, the clothes in itself and we, Deputy Mayor signing his life away by to call up that that big tall ladder. I don't know how many feet high that was, but
It was up there.
Yeah, and and I'm extremely scared of heights. And actually, that was my first task. It was the ladder, because they split us up into teams. Um and um I mean, just learn so much. I mean, our firefighters, I mean, just to throw some statistics, statistics, excuse me, tongue twister, um out there is that, you know, they are three, they are three more times likely to 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 get cancer and be exposed to because of the exposure to carcinogens. And we know that right now our firefighters are lacking um uh suits. Um they think most firefighter stations have at least two pair of 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 suits that our firefighters can use. So if they go out and respond to a fire, they come back, they throw that into the washer, they clean up, and then, you know, the exposure to these carcinogens lessens and they're, I mean, and then developing, the likelihood of the developing cancer lessens. So I mean, it's just something that we also have to consider, because you know, our men and women really need to uh uh stay safe. And uh for us to find money somewhere to make sure that that um we're equipping them right. So they ma- we make sure that they are safe out there, keeping us safe and healthy. Um but yeah, um before I toss it over, uh Miss, again, Mr. Hall, Chief Hallbrake isn't here. Uh but he's leading an amazing and incredible team. Um and uh, you know, I'm 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 so lucky to to not uh have to uh do that every day, because I would suck at it. Um but these men are incredibly, incredibly diligent. They are, I mean, you said it yourself, not every hero wears the cape. Um and these, I mean, they 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 they're the symbol of that, really. Um and I mean, I couldn't do what they do. My hat goes off to them, my heart goes out to them and their families, because they leave, you know, when they're when they're about to start their shift, they leave their homes, not knowing what's going to happen and if they're gonna come back safe or not. So uh you know, my heart goes out to their families as well. Um and again, I think during, no, I believe that during my time in council, I will make sure that we do everything possible to make sure that we're also putting them first and prioritizing their well-being. So that concludes my my items. You wanna take it away, Deputy Mayor?
Well, I wanna echo what Counselor Frosto said. You know, I I went into this thinking it was gonna be a walk in the park, but it wasn't. Um you know, it motivated me to work out, and I I'm gonna work out, and we'll see what happens in ten years, in two years. Hopefully, they invite me again, and I could, you know, um do it again. But yeah, you know, David and Sean, they they were amazing. They took care of us, you know. Sean was asking if I needed water every thirty minutes or so, and and I was drinking as much water as you would bring to me. So um it's an amazing, amazing group. I mean, you know, they they have forty-eight hour shifts. And they can't stop, you know. I I was able to stop, we were able to stop. They they gave us some some breaks and, you know, yeah. Then everybody had blood pressure taken. Um but these guys, they they just can't stop. They 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 they're there to protect the community of Sunnyside. They're there to to give us assistance whenever whenever we need it. Um so I appreciate all the training that they go through. Um you know, they might not use it every day, but I know that they have it, and whenever we we ask for it, then, you know, they're they're gonna help us out. So, yeah, definitely, you know, shout out to David and and Sean, and, you know, thank you for the amazing experience. Yeah. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, everyone. And I I I do want to congratulate the two of you in going through that uh that hammer training. I had the opportunity to do that two years ago. It is still the singularly most memorable and impactful thing that I went through. Um it was hard work. I loved every minute of it, but I'm I I got to the end of the day and I couldn't hardly take the coat off, because I was sweating so hard, and it was just drenched from the inside out. And uh but yeah, it it's an amazing experience, and I encourage other people when they have the opportunity to to do that. Um so two things. Uh first of all, uh it's been mentioned that Easter's coming up this Sunday, which means that we are in the midst of Holy Week or Semana Santa. I spent a fair amount of my life living in Latin America, and I know how important that is there. And I just wanna wish everybody a great Holy Week and a great Easter. And um I pray that it is a meaningful time for you. Um earlier this year, criticized for not bringing in uh other religions, so I do wanna also mention that, yes, if you are practicing Muslim, uh you're in the midst of the month of Ramadan. So Ramadan Karim to you, and I apologize, my Arabic is horrible, but uh I hope that's meaningful for you as well. All right, I do wanna read into the record something that I had the privilege of doing on Saturday. Saturday for me was was a great day. Uh one of our pioneer community members turned one hundred earlier this month and had a big celebration on Saturday, and that in individual was um Delta Bootsma. And her family has been in this area for a very long time. Uh her maiden name was Price. Her father was uh superintendent of the Outlook um Irrigation District. And I, there was a Price working alongside of Walter Granger in the development and design of our canals. So this is an important family in our community, and I just wanna read the uh the comments that I made. Um so and it goes like this, "As my dad was a car guy, he was officially employed as a Volkswagen mechanic, but all cars were of interest to him and by extension to me. As a result, my earliest memories revolve around cars and repairing them, which is why, when I think of my early memories of Sunnyside, the Bootsma Auto Body Shop is right there at the top of my mind. We passed by the shop every day as we came into town from Outlook. Like many family businesses, both husband and wife were involved, and many times the kids, too. The business was successful and continues operations today under the name Advanced Collision Repair, still owned by her descendants. Delta has been recognized over the years with the Spirit of Sunnyside Award as a pioneer. And I would like to mention a few things that I've been able to learn about Delta. She was born and raised in Outlook. Her dad was the superintendent of the Outlook Irrigation District. She met her husband at work, but she made him propose three times before she believed he meant it. Her Christian faith was very important to her, and she taught Sunday School at the First Christian Church at Sunnyside, a church her mother helped start. She loved gardening, and she has kept a vegetable garden that was about a half an acre in size. Now, if you keep a vegetable garden, you know just how big a half an acre is and how much work is involved in that. And I know a number of people in Sunnyside love gardening, and around the very the valley, they've got a lot of really nice gardens. She was one of them. I am told that she has a great memory. She's fun-loving and a positive person, and there were many stories that day about her tremendous memory. Her children, grandchildren, and their spouses have been inspired to serve the city of Sunnyside over many years, including city committees and commissions such as Volunteer Fire, City Council, and Mayor. And for that re- reason, I wanted to recognize Delta Bootsma, and I recognize her with a mayor's coin to commemorate one hundred years of a life well-lived, and in thanks and gratitude from the city of Sunnyside for all that she has done either directly or indirectly to benefit the city. And I wanted to read that into the record today, because I think that's very important, that we recognize those of our community who have served in so many ways over such a long lifespan. All right. Next item, upcoming council meetings. Madam City Clerk. Alright. Next item, upcoming council meetings. Madam City Clerk.
Okay, our next meeting is April first. It's a workshop. Um, and you will be discussing ARPA funding and where that is all allocated. Um, April eighth, you'll have a special meeting, which would be a study session. And you'll discuss Adams Wonderland. Ibrahim Mustafa's application. Um, and that's all we have for now. April twenty-second, we have the stormwater rate analysis, which you will um, discuss at your study session and consider taking action on the twenty-second. And that is it for now.
Alright, thank you. Again, reminder, if anybody has an item, uh, agenda item they'd like to put on there, please do so. At the latest by the Wednesday of the Monday or the Mon, the Wednesday before the, the meeting, so that that can be included.
And I'll also add in the interpreting services here. So we have a date to expect this back.
Alright, thank you for that. Alright, items from department heads. Mister Martin.
I will start House Wright with Mister Knight.
There it goes. Sorry about that. Uh, don't have much to say. Just wanted to say that we had thirty-seven tickets created over this last week and forty-four tickets uh, closed. So we're still pounding them out. Doesn't sound like a lot, but trust me, a lot of them are not just a simple, you know, click, click, click and it's fixed. I mean, they can take, you know. A long time to, to sort out stuff. So not much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's tomorrow.
Good evening. I just have a small little update for you. Um, in the Human Resources Department. So we have our seasonals. Uh, that will be starting in April and in May, and that is for the Public Works Department. Um, so every year we have seasonals that join our groups for about five months. And they help in all of our public works department. That's the Water Department, Waste Water Department, Streets and Parks. And Storm. Um, so we will be bringing them on here. Um. Uh, some in April, some in May, and the duration of their time with us is five months. Um, we will also have testing coming up in April for the Police Department and for the Corrections. And currently that is what we have.
Thank you. Mister Sanchez.
Good evening, council. Um, I just wanted to um, update you a little bit. Uh, last month we brought forward the um, ADA. Uh, transition um, project that we've been working on. We, we've. Had an application approved. Um, to, uh, I was notified that the um, the application. Uh, we, we received some funding. We didn't get the full uh, million that we had asked for. We, we ended up getting five hundred thousand. But that'll get us started. And so then at the next council meeting, I will bring that uh, forward to uh. Move forward to the next step. Um, that's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Riley. Questions for Mister Riley? Okay, thanks, sir. Certain things we don't wanna encourage, right?
I have a few things. First is the Miss Sunnyside Spirit of Sunny, uh, Spirit of Sunnyside Awards Dinner and Auction. That is taking place on, um, on April twenty-sixth at six thirty. You can scan the QR code to donate, decorate a table. Or nominate someone that's done something great for Sunnyside. Um, they usually get a plaque and a mayor's coin. Um, so if you'd like to attend, um, you can also purchase tickets by using the QR code. Um, so that is again, April twenty-sixth at six thirty at the Sunnyside Community Center. Next. I put a copy of the Sunnyside Business Card Directory in front of you. Um. And you guys are on the back. Also, our contact information for a few departments are below your pictures. Um, what else? As Mayor had mentioned, we have vacancies. You can apply online or pick up an application at City Hall. Again, the vacancies are for the Civil Service, Planning Commission, Lodging Tax Advisory. Committee, Municipal Airport Board, and Sunnyside Arts Commission. You can again, apply online, pick up an application or contact me so I can. Send you the application. Um, and we can also discuss if um, you. Uh, if you think you may be a good fit for some of these committees, we can talk. Um. Also, I will be working with IT to. Uh, for a better placement of these cameras, maybe one over there mounted and then. Try to have another one other than that one facing the public. So we'll work together with IT. Also, the Sunnyside Municipal Code is current as of March twentieth. Which would be ordinance twenty twenty-four oh one passed on January eighth. Um, as of today, we've received twenty-one public records requests. I also attended the Washington's, uh, Washington Municipal Clerks Association last week. And I just wanna thank council and our um, city managers in the past who have approved our trainings for us to attend. And um, develop our skills. So thank you. Um, and then I did provide a list of proclamations that I've gathered from other cities that they have done. Would council like to review those in a meeting or is that something you'd like to give to the rules subcommittee?
Suggestions from council.
And we can still bring them obviously to council.
Do you have them divided by the month that the proclamation is apt?
Yes.
Okay. Um, they can, so what I had in mind, if we, if we were to do this, is that. The proclamations that apply to the month that we're in would come before the council, the first meeting of the month.
Okay.
So there'd be three different proclamations that can come before council.
So you're okay with the list that I sent?
I think so. Does anybody have any objections to the list? Or if there's things that can be, there's always things that can be added, right? What was the number on there? I mean, there was a significant number of uh, proclamations that can be issued.
I think we can stick to the list that we have. And then I really liked your idea where we can probably even open it up to the public. And they, they can actually submit something that they would like to, for us to acknowledge and turn into a proclamation.
Okay. And that list that I sent you again is just um, something I've gathered from some of the cities that are around here that have done it. And may not apply to Sunnyside, but um.
Just an idea.
Yeah. I'll still, okay.
Martin? I have just a few things. Um, so to date, uh, the city has created a hundred and one. Uh, records, done twen- two hundred and thirty inspections, issued sixty-nine permits and collected little short shy of thirty-two thousand dollars. In revenue in the, in the building department. Um, special events are now coming through the Community Economic Development Department. Um, our city planner Sydney is, has been. Putting in a lot of hours in working on the special events and getting it, it running. Um, so I, I think our big. It's kind of, kind of funny, but um, in, in a, in a, in a different kind of way, but are the first. Big event this is getting tested out with is Cinco de Mayo. So um, she's, she's cutting her teeth on that, which is great. Um. Am I, am I allowed to say the fire marshal position yet? I'll look at. As mid fishing. But we have, okay, we have extended an offer to, to an individual for a fire marshal. So we will show, hopefully crossing our fingers. Um, that we'll be resuming fire marshal duties pretty soon here, which would be fantastic. Um, graffiti has not let up. Um, um, we, uh, this morning, uh, one of our code enforcement officers was showing me a, a house that was just tagged up. Um, so it's just stuff like that. It's, it was painted out today, but it's just, it just hasn't let up. Um, and it's all up and down the valley right now. It's, it's absolutely everywhere. Everybody's getting hit with it pretty hard. Uh, but we'll just keep trying to, trying to paint it out as we can and try to come up with some solutions. Um, and then I, I wanna bring something back because there's been a lot of requests. So I think, I think we'll, we'll bring it back. But um, apparently the, the city used to do like a, a cleanup day and mid, mid-spring. Um, so. And in fall, okay. So, so this, the spring, I, I am going to be working with um, Yakima Waste Systems to kinda get a. Uh, a couple garbage bins over at the park and I'll, I'll have some staff, some staff.
Gonna make a suggestion. Yes, a couple of garbage bins will not even be closed.
I, I understand, yes.
We will fill up twenty of them and there'll be multiple trips from the dump.
Yeah, yes. So, so we're gonna kind of try to copy the, the, the process that had been done in the past. And I'll have some of my staff out there. Monitoring the situation and making sure things stay organized. And we'll be, we'll be letting the neighborhood, or the, the residents, um. Letting the residents know. And we will, we'll probably start the process early in the morning and have it go to a set time in the evening. So that way that we're not there all day. So. Um, it'll be busy. We understand that it'll be busy, but um, you know, it's, it's been highly requested. So we'll, we'll try it out to see how it goes. And um, kinda take it from there.
Mister Canard would probably know better than all of us because he lives across the street from the parking lot where those bins would be located. And it's a very popular event in the city. Um, people look forward to it. And when it stopped happening, people were upset. And so, yeah, we've been looking for ways to uh, reinstitute that. So. Thank you for taking mo- motion on that one.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Alright, there being no further business to come before council. If there's no objection. Ms. Renteria.
Will you excuse um, councillor Hart from this meeting? Consider.
You know what? You are correct. Um, we did not excuse her from this meeting. Councillor Hart has requested an excused absence from tonight's meetings. And I just sort of. Excuse her from the one. Is there any objection to excusing councillor Hart from this council meeting? Alright, this heart is excused. Thank you, everyone. Alright, so again, there not being no further business to come before council. And without objection, I adjourn this meeting at eight forty-nine PM. That went long.
Yeah, we're gonna take the picture.